We are duly assembled this evening, October the 26th, 2021, for the purpose of a council workshop meeting. With that, we are going to move then into a discussion regarding business license changes. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to turn it over to our financial departments. Katrina.
Good evening. My name's Katrina Woodruff. I'm here tonight for Maggie Adams, which you all know, our business license inspector. But our newest business license inspector is Heather Towner. And of course, David. I don't know how much you all have heard about the Standardization Act.
That is due to take effect beginning of the year. I know some of you have attended the conferences and some have not. So please interrupt any time if you want further explanation, but I don't want to explain something that you already have the knowledge of. So Business License Standardization Act was enacted to eliminate business practices discrepancies across the municipalities in the state and the counties. There are different renewal dates, different rate classes, and whatnot. So this is enacted to alleviate that and make it easier to do business in South Carolina. Local governments can still set their own fees schedules, and that's part of why we're here tonight, to show you that. There will be a state portal that is part of this act, where renewals can be done online, only renewals, not new business licenses. They will still need to come in to the municipalities to get their first-time license. And this again takes effect January 2022. There are seven steps to implementation. The first step was to convert the business license year. We were ahead of that game. We did that several years ago, being with the model ordinance. So we've got to check on that. The next step was to review our data. We worked with the municipal association to do that. The staff looked over 3,716 licenses, and I'm happy to tell you that we received high compliments on our data from the municipal association. The next step is to rebalance rates. And that's where we are here tonight with you. So we have a proposed rate class schedule that we want to share with you. If you are on board, then we can move on to steps four and five, which is for you to adopt it at your next meeting and then replace the ordinance. Once that's in place, we can set up our online renewal center that I talked about, the statewide portal. And then we'll notify our stakeholders when we send out the business license renewal applications. We will put a letter in there indicating the state portal that they could renew on if they choose so.
Ms. Woodruff, who's actually hosting the portal? Is the municipal association doing that, or did they agree on a third-party provider? What was the resolution of that?
It is at the state fiscal affairs is actually hosting.
The portal?
So our goal in the rebalancing is to have net neutrality, which is less than 1% difference. So we cannot have a windfall with these changes. And so I don't know if you can see on your screens, but here, if we don't do anything to change our rate schedule, we'll be 2.04%, or a $77,000 windfall. So we're here to propose a 5 cent per thousand decrease for rates classes 1 through 7. And if you do adopt that, we'll be at 0.04%.
Do you want to magnify that?
Mr. Griffin, what we can do is provide you this document without getting out of the PowerPoint.
We're having a tough time seeing it.
I sure am.
You asking on Mr. Griffin's behalf. That was my turn.
I can't see that.
Okay.
Yeah, the rest, the other eye test will be later.
So if you do adopt it, the 5 cent per thousand decrease that we're proposing, that'll put you at 0.04% change to keep us within that net neutrality. And the overall revenue difference is only 1,500, and that's to the positive for us.
What was the, what was the maximum we could have come up?
They want us to be less than 1%. And without a change, we are at 2.04%.
I just wondered what they consider a windfall.
Yep.
Who pays for the hosting service?
It's, there's no charge.
Taxpayers pay for it.
I'm sure it's built into.
Fiscal affairs, it's just, it's built into the budget, fiscal affairs. And I imagine they've rolled that into, I'm assuming, and I can verify, that they rolled that into their budget as part of a web hosting service.
As far as I'm aware, we haven't been added any fees from.
I hope it turns out better than most other state-run websites, because they're awful.
They're just hosting. It is actually the municipal association.
Developed it.
That yes, they had their own developers, and they've worked with us, getting feedback to hopefully, you know, have it good. I'm sure there'll be room for improvement, but it's an ongoing process. Here, I wanted to highlight some examples of the changes. Thought maybe these might hit home to you all. So if you wanted to just look at these briefly, if you have any questions, please ask. I'll go ahead and move to the next slide. So as you are looking at these examples, the new structure allows for classes 1 through 9. 1 through 7 are set up in mandatory reorganization of our standard businesses. Rate class 8 is now where all the contractors are going to fall. So if you look at the contractor line on this slide, you can see there's no change. Only classes 1 through 7, we're proposing the rate change. Classes 8 and 9 will not be affected. Class 9, they left open for municipalities to assign their special businesses. Where in Greer's case, we have manufacturing, warehousing, bingo halls, scrapyards, and the like.
So refresh my memory in just a minute, because the classes used to be defined by the code, the NQ code, NE.
The NAICS code?
Yeah. So has there been a change in the definition of those, or a change in the classification of the people that are under that code, or what?
So the NAICS change every five years. The last time was 2017, and we are in compliance with that. And that is part of the new law. All the cities have to come up to that standard, so we are good with that. This is just a reclassification within the rate classes.
Okay. So we're just coming into a compliance for 2022, then? It just happens to fall at the same time this is taking place?
Correct.
Yeah.
It still does make the system.
Yeah.
There is just, if you recall, in the last, about every two years, we would adopt a new class schedule. And that always took businesses that were sometimes in a 4, went to a 3, one went to a 2. This is that same process. The state law and the adoption of the new model ordinance is very minimal for us, because we've been on the model ordinance since 2001.
Yeah, right.
So having the businesses move between classes, we've been doing that since 2001. So it's really nothing new for this aspect of it. It's just now a part of the state law.
So there was some pushback from municipalities like Greenville and others that were using their own hybrid code, basically. Are they going to be operating now under this system?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Alright, so it's uniform then across the state, basically?
This goes into effect for the whole state on January 1st.
Okay, alright, okay. One thing mentioned in the beginning was that you can renew your license online through that state portal. So how long, how long do we as a city have to wait for that? If people do not physically come in downstairs and they renew online, how long do we have to wait for that revenue to come from the ether back?
It's instantaneous.
Okay.
The way the portal is designed, and if you recall, there were about 20 of us across the state were on that state committee, which I was on. We spent three or four years developing what the municipal association sent to the state to develop the law. And then we started working on the portal, and it's been underway for two or three years, developed by the staff across the state in conjunction with the municipal association. But when it went to the state law piece, there were some very strong opponents that did not want the municipal association to control the website. So while we have built it and have designed it, and will continue to make improvements, that I'll speak to in just a second, they wanted it housed at the Revenue Fiscal Affairs Office. So that's, so that state department is actually hosting and housing the database, but they don't get into it at all. Through the contractor relationship, I think it's VC3 that was the designer and builder. They still have access to it, and we will be contracting with them to continue upgrades. So at present, it is for renewals for all businesses except contractors. And that's just because the contractors are very complicated compared to other businesses, because they can renew annually, or they can buy a license on a project basis. And developing the code for that was just a little more difficult. They do expect that to be in place in a year from now. And then the second thing we can't do, as Katrina mentioned, is new businesses cannot come onto the portal. And that is something we're looking at for development in the next year or two, if they do determine that it's possible. But the way the portal works, the business goes on this site. And theoretically, if a single business has 15 licenses, they go through the whole list, do all 15 all at once. And the credit card company that is doing the processing hits all of our accounts that night. So there's no lag, other than the normal credit card lag in receiving the revenue.
In one of my terms, as the past president of the municipal association, I was on the first board that met with the realtors about this. So this has been going on since 2001, yeah, the dark ages, 2011 or '12, yeah.
It's been a long time.
So the new businesses, they continue as they always have in the past, right?
Correct. So they will contact us directly. We can do that through the phone, fax, email, you know, face-to-face in the office for those new businesses.
Is it something online that directs them that way, you know, so they?
I imagine if they go to the portal, Mr. Griffin, and there's no record of their having had a business license on the portal, because it's only for renewals, they'll be forwarded back to the municipality that issues the license.
So this is an impact analysis. What this really says is that 75% of our businesses are going to see a decrease in their rate and what they pay us, and 25% will see a small increase. Again, 25% may sound like a lot, but when you look at the dollar amount, it was $1,500 net difference. And that's really insignificant for, you know, 3,600 businesses. Here's a visual view of the proposed class changes. A lot of the 2s are going to the 1s. In essence, we are getting away from the 6s. So it's, again, it all nets out, but this is a visual of where the changes are taking place. Here's some highlights of the classes 1 through 7 that are going to see a decrease in their rates. So these are the people that are going to be happy with you. Restaurants are class 2, they're going to go to a 1. Attorneys are class 7, they're going to go to a 5. Retail's class 2, they're going to go to a 1. Beauty salons, class 6, they'll now be a class 3. And then, of course, any other business that remains in the same class is going to come ahead, because they'll have a 0.5 cent decrease per thousand in their rate for renewal. Here, you'll see the highlight of those classes 1 through 7 that are going to see an increase. So these ones might be the ones you may look for phone calls from. Hotels are going to go from a 2 to a 3. Professional, scientific, and technical, which are architects, engineers, surveyors, accountants, they're going to go from either a class 2 or 3 is where they fall now, they're going to become 5s. Healthcare, doctors, dentists are 3, they're going to move to a 4. Nursing homes, this is the one that we're kind of anticipating, we're going to get the most calls on, are going to go from a class 1 to a class 4. Construction, mining, and forestry, class 1 to a class 7. That's a big jump. So these, those 2, the nursing homes, and then we do have some equipment rental places here in Greer, and they're going to see a jump.
Why is that?
The way the system works under the North American Industry Classification System is every year, as all these businesses file their tax returns with the IRS, the IRS releases that data and then ranks all of the nation's businesses by industry code on profitability. So for those that are moving from a lower class to a higher class, as an industry standard across the whole nation are being more profitable than they were in years prior. So this whole classification system is based off the profitability of industry standards.
Punishment for success.
Yes.
Levelling the playing, levelling the playing field.
Is that how you look at it, huh?
And as I mentioned earlier, classes 8 and 9, there is not going to be a, you know, we're not proposing any rate change. We propose that those remain the same. You're just going to see a difference in the number of, the class number, just because that's what state law mandates now. We don't have a choice on that. The class 9s, you might see a 9.1, 9.2, but they're all going to fall under that class 9.
What's a drinking place, a bar?
A bar. That's how they call it out. And we do have a few of the class 9, our special ones, that we will be reviewing individually to determine if they may fall, be better suited into a class 1 through 7, to try to lessen the number of class 9s that we have.
All these different classes, this is statewide?
Correct.
Okay. We don't provide it how we want to, the state did it? Just so we know who to go with.
That's exactly right.
Time for soccer.
So this is, this slide here, the standard class schedule, is basically just to inform you that now it is going to be state law mandated, that we'll be back here in front of you every other year with proposed changes in the rates, like classes, like we are this evening.
So to Ms. Albert's point, are we, are we as a city notifying folks that this is taking place? Or are we assuming that they've seen this in the news? Or are we giving them a heads up, or what?
The actual process, we haven't determined yet, but that's the, was step 7, was notifying stakeholders. So I anticipate us doing a letter when we do, when we mail renewals to the businesses that will have some explanation of the new state law.
Another item we'd like to point out, a big change, is the standard definition of gross income, so that it's the same across the state now. Last year, we brought to you an ordinance change in which you adopted, and got us a little bit ahead of the game, where we put shall provide documentation of gross income. So that has groomed our businesses a little bit. That's going to be a little easier for our staff with this provision in the new state law. One thing I'd like to point out is the second bullet point there, that if a resident business, they have a domicile or business done within that taxing jurisdiction, shall include all gross receipts or revenue received or accrued by such person or business, excepting income earned outside of the taxing jurisdiction on which a license tax is paid by the person or business or other taxing jurisdiction, and fully reported to the taxing jurisdiction. So what that is, is for some of our contractors comes to mind, if they have a resident business, they have to pay on all of their gross receipts, unless they can provide proof that they paid on those in another taxing jurisdiction.
Okay, so I have an office, so I have a domicile here. And 20% of my work is done within the city limits. So I'm going to be charged that other 80%.
Unless you have a business license that you provide as backup documentation of why you can deduct that income.
But what if it's done in an area where there's not a tax, like in county, where they're not requiring that?
Then it would be taxable in Greer.
You're going to tax somebody for income they made somewhere else?
That's state code, though? And we have to, we have to abide by that? That's all part of the Standardization Act. Yeah, you're going to see a lot of contractors move outside the city, because that's, that's a big, big lick right there. That's awful.
Well, to your point, this is one of the two biggest effects of state law on us particularly. We've been on the model ordinance, like I said, for a long time. And for the last 20 years, we tweaked the model ordinance to allow for what we call resident businesses, they're calling it domiciled businesses, to only pay on what they did inside the city. So we were basically treating contractors inside the city like they were non-residents. So they only paid on what they did inside the city. And that was an interpretation that we applied for the last 20 years. So this is now codified in state law, so that the contractor that is domiciled inside the city is treated like any other business that has a brick-and-mortar business, that all of the revenue is taxed here locally, except for the revenue that's taxed at another jurisdiction. The second factor that is different under the state codification is where we took a business-friendly approach, so that a new business coming in only paid the base fee the first year. The legislation under the state code now requires us to project their income for that first year. And then when they come back and renew, we will do a true-up for that first year, and then they pay for that second year. Those are the two biggest changes that affect us. And they're, they're changes you may very well hear from, you know, from constituents and businesses.
Yeah, because that's, that's a big hit. I can see people saying, "Well, we're just going to domicile somewhere else."
And only pay when you come in?
Yeah.
The other side of that is, if you're not domiciled inside the city, when you do come in, it's a double rate. So, you know, you're doubling 20% up to 40, not paying on the 80. So yeah, mathematically, it does work, but.
That's a huge flaw in that.
That is a big flaw, because that not only takes away revenue from, revenue from, it takes additional revenue to operate, but it also takes revenue out from the local economy, because these guys are going to leave.
And I would say we were, I don't know of any other city, I won't say there aren't any, but I don't know of any other city that took that interpretation that we did. Again, we were trying to be a business-friendly atmosphere, that we did those two interpretations or changes from the model ordinance, just locally. But I don't know of any other city that did that.
Other cities that we've pulled permits in and you have to have a business license is based on that particular job.
Correct. That's the non-domiciled business.
Right.
So you're going in as a non-resident contractor, and non-residents pay the double rate. So where this is $1.55, if you're a non-resident on that same money, you would come in and pay, was it 310? 310 per thousand instead of $1.55 per thousand.
And then that rate is set by the state?
The, the rate that you actually pay on, the tax rate, is set by council. And we'll be bringing that, the three things that we'll be bringing on the next meeting following this workshop is the ordinance to adopt under the state law, the classification schedule, and the rate schedule.
So just as a word of background, and you and Andy may want to weigh in on this. And Rena, thank you for joining us tonight. I'm going to ask your perspective on some of this in just a minute, but feel free to join this conversation. As Mr. Seifert has indicated, there was three or four or more years of negotiation in this regard, because where we started eight or 10 years ago was a discussion about business license fees versus no business license fees. And that was, that was where, that was where this whole thing started. And over a number of years, and a number of meetings, and a number of compromises, and, you know, a couple of people leaving office and other things, we are, we are where we are today because of the work of the municipal association and the association of counties and others that were working on this. So there is, there is plenty enough, I don't want to say blame, but there's plenty enough of this to go around in terms of why we are where we are. And is that, that accurate?
I think that's an accurate statement, yes, sir. That this, the business license has been under fire for 15, 20 years. We've been able to defend up until about four years ago, and that's when, can't remember the senator's name, but he proposed legislation on the floor, there was a $100 flat fee in South Carolina. And for us, $100 times 3,700 businesses, I mean, we know what that math is, doesn't equate anywhere near the, you know, for four and a half million dollars that we received through business licenses, that's 40 to 45% of our budget. And that's true across the state. And, and we, you know, municipal association, through their lobbying efforts, quickly explained to municipal, excuse me, to the legislature, how important business licensing is to the cities, and now a handful of counties in South Carolina through their revenue stream, that if they did come in with a $100 flat fee, we'd be laying off 40% of our workforce. So that's where, so from four years, we had already started working on some standardization to head off complaints that we were already receiving. It was always termed in the terms of business license. It was really more on the permitting side and building permits, and that's where a lot of the confusion's coming from. But it always got termed in the complaint as licensing. So we tried to head off that as much as we could, as early as we could, trying to standardize. And then about, that was about seven, eight years ago, as the mayor alluded to. Then about three or four years ago is when they brought the new legislation that was going to gut and really wipe out business licensing. And then we've been on this process for the last three or four years. And as the mayor said, lots of negotiations and lots of compromises. And this is where we are, and this is what got passed in the legislature.
Does this include, I remember BMW was bringing some of those parcels into the city, and they were reluctant to do that because of something like this. And I remember we worked out some kind of, maybe we had a special arrangement with them.
Right.
And we have several international businesses inside the city, too. I mean, are they going to, you know, have to report what they're doing all over the world, or what's?
No, no, it's only the code for manufacturers, they have, it's the way we've always operated under manufacturing is either the revenue for that location, or if it's a, if it's a location that does not generate revenue, then we look at it as an assessment, where they assign revenue to that location. And if they don't do that, then we would do it as a cost center that they, if you're in business, you're in business to make money, under that theory, that if that business costs you $1 million to run, then in theory, you at least have $1 million in revenue to cover that cost. So it's two, two types of, excuse me, one was revenue, one is allocation, two was, the third one was assessment. So those were the three revenue options for manufacturers that still exist in the law today. And then two years ago, I guess it was, when we passed the ordinance specific to manufacturing, manufacturing, warehousing, and the trucking industry, and that still exists. All of those agreements that were memorialized, either formally or informally, still exist in the state law and are grandfathered in. So the ordinance that we passed is still in effect for manufacturers and warehousing and trucking.
Is it provisions in the code? I got all kinds of wheels turning in my head. But if you've got a business, a contracting business, and let's say they establish a company that's construction, a Greer City, and that's all, that's all they report, so it's only gonna be what they do in the city. What kind of, what does the code say, cause ma- maybe he is going out, but he's doing it under a different name, and he's doing it in a different address, whatever.
The, the code doesn't address that specifically, I mean, that, you know, that's a very specific circumstance. The code is trying to address, you know, very broad application. Uh, but, but in that instance, if that is truly the way the business operates, and if you have a city contractor and all they do is city work, and that's what they earn, and that's what they report, then that's all that they would pay on.
For that business.
For that business. But if there's a second company, if they use the same address, they're still domiciled inside the city, that second business would have to be outside the city limits.
But how would you do it?
Because when you report it to the state, you have, um, what do they call it, the, uh, registered agent, registered addresses, and it comes in on the returns like that.
Are you talking about your state license?
Yeah, you, um.
All right. You're just a ball of joy this evening.
We're the bearer of bad news. Questions?
Yeah, oh, before the term disaster comes to mind.
So the, the, the rates on class eight, that's where contractors are?
Correct.
Is there gonna be an adjustment, because, well, I thought we couldn't have a windfall, so you're gonna have a huge windfall there, so, but you're just, it's not by class, it's by a whole?
By the whole factory businesses.
Goes back to the old balloon discussion, I mean, you can squeeze one end of the balloon, but it's gonna just force it to another area, so it's.
Yeah, but that's, that's, uh, I mean, you're talking about, just by the way our state is, you have small municipalities and huge unincorporated areas. And so most, most of your work is going to be outside of those areas, or outside the incorporated areas, so, so now you're gonna, you're gonna, you're telling a business, you're gonna triple your business license fee, you're paying for work that you did somewhere else, but the municipality's getting the, the benefit of that. And there's no logic behind that.
Well, that would be an accurate statement, but for, as I said, we are the only city that I know of that did that. Every other city has taxed one hundred percent of the earnings.
So it's just, it's a, it's a change for us, it's more of a?
It's not a change for everybody.
Okay, it's a change for us, but I'm, that's still the same logic behind it, there's no, there is, there's not logic behind that. It's, it's, uh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna offset this, we're, we're gonna show that we don't have, we're gonna give everybody else the break, and the class eight folks are gonna absorb it all.
Were they? The class eights were unaffected from the change, and they were removed from the rebalancing?
Well, so how much revenue, additional revenue from contractors are you projecting? Cause that's gotta be a lot.
I don't know, we haven't looked at that specifically, cause it's only gonna affect the contractors that are inside the city. And on the whole, most of our contractor revenue was from itinerant contractors. So, yeah, I mean, yes, there are some, and I'm not belittling that, belittling that in any way, um, but our number of contractors that are outside the city are, are much higher than the ones that are domiciled inside the city. So, and that piece won't change.
And, and that was one of the, the main sticking points about this from the very beginning was, more and more companies were working outside of their domiciled residents, and they were paying full business license fees in every town that they were working for, and that was, I know from the construction side and, and some of the other businesses, that was the, that was the real sticking point on this, was they had to have a, a business license for the full load in every city that they were working in.
They weren't supposed to. If, if, if they were following the model ordinance, they did allow the exemptions for.
Yeah, for, for, for being able to show the others, yeah.
But if they weren't following the model ordinance.
Yeah.
Then they may, you know, it could be something different.
I don't know that there's been, and of course, the law hasn't changed yet, but I, I, I don't know that there's been a, a, a huge amount of pushback up and, up until this point. I mean, one of the things that, um, was really, one of the biggest obstacles is this, was, was the portal. I mean, that was the main thing that people were looking for, because there was so many businesses that had locations statewide, that, that some businesses, particularly residential builders and contractors, had whole departments, and alls they did was business license across the state. And so, you know, you might've had a business that had two or three employees that only kept up with business license, cause they were working in thirty different cities in, in the, in the state.
Well, I struggle with it from the, you know, as a, as a Realtor, and I, I talked to you about this, about my specific situation, you know, last year that we dealt with this, but I think it's just the assumed profitability inside of each business, you know, that there's, there's a certain amount, but every business is different. I mean, just as an example, I mean, there's some commercial agents that will charge, you know, ten percent for a transaction, and so they're, they're highly profitable in that deal, and then there's flat fee agents that'll charge you five hundred dollars per transaction, and they're taxed.
On the same revenue.
Right, it makes, it makes no sense. I mean, a, a, a flat fee agent could sell a million-dollar house, and they only charge the guy five hundred dollars to sell the house.
Right. So that, that is a definite flaw in the statistical analysis from the Internal Revenue Service, yes.
But there's nothing we can do about that on, on our end?
No, that's, the IRS statistics are on an aggregate basis for, for the whole nation. The code that we have before us is on an aggregate basis for the whole state, and it comes down to us, and we have to apply it on an aggregate basis for the whole city.
So we, but the only, only room we have to make adjustments is at the rate.
And the rate schedule itself.
I know we're getting close on time, do, do you wanna address anything from the economic development side? I, I, I know this question's been raised tonight, that, you know, that we have hinged some deals on, uh, on, on, uh, fees, and so, um, from, from your standpoint, you wanna, you give us any oversight in terms of, come onto the podium if you don't mind, any, anything that, you know, might be worthy of a conversation at this point?
Well, certainly grateful for, uh, the grandfathering in of the declining rate for those manufacturers and distributors who have the very large, uh, values. I think that will certainly be appreciated by the, the outstanding community. You know, business license fee is obviously a very sensitive topic with, uh, with businesses here in the community. Um, no one's ever thanked us for the fees and the taxes that they pay. Um, other communities, uh, folks in the real estate industry do use it against us, uh, in terms of, uh, helping folks decide where they need to be and, and, uh, why Greer might not be a great fit. We try to focus on, uh, sort of a bigger picture philosophy as it pertains to, to those taxes and fees. Um, it's not like Councilman Bettis is sitting in a, a room full of money, um, you know, because you've collected all this, uh, business license fee, you're taking those proceeds and you're reinvesting them back in the community, back in the assets that make Greer special, that attract employees, that build quality of life. Uh, there's a reason why, uh, in an era of declining unemployment, uh, we here in the Greer community have had good success in attracting new industry and, and keeping employees and getting new employees for the business and industries to locate here. Uh, there's a reason that, uh, people are building homes here in the Greer community at a unbelievable rate, ten percent of all new housing starts in 2022. Um, I would argue that's because of decisions that you make to reinvest dollars that you collect back into the assets that make this community special. Um, it will always be a point of competition, uh, but, uh, again, we focus on the reason why and the good things that you do with those proceeds.
Questions of Mr. Dean? Thank you, sir, for your input. Mr. Mayorman?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, unless there's anything specific, I will just say that we will, uh, provide counsel, this deck, and staff will be available to answer any questions as we move forward. The intent is to bring first reading this ordinance to y'all for your consideration at our first meeting in November. The law requires that we have this adopted and implemented by January tenth, is it first, um, of next year, so we wanted, we wanted to get this in front of you and adopted, um, obviously before year end, and I will say this, as much angst as there is about this, the one good thing I would say out of this is, this is not for us a huge leap, as so many of our, uh, other cities around the state are having to, to make. There is, there's some significant angst in some areas, we've been on top of this from the get-go, and, uh, as you can see, as Katrina laid out, we're talking a difference in fifteen hundred bucks, thirteen hundred bucks, spread out over three thousand businesses, and that's the difference in, uh, what we're talking about. So, uh, these are more, I think, philosophical questions that we're gonna have to continue to address in the years to come, as opposed to actual monetary questions. But, um, again, staff will be available between now and then to answer any questions, we'll provide you everything you need between now and then, uh, to make a decision. And if I can say one more thing before we wrap up, I wanna thank Katrina for all her hard work in getting this done, as well as, uh, the rest of the finance staff, and I also wanna say thank you, Katrina, for your service to the city of Greer as she moves on, um, to become the Deputy Administrator in Surfside, uh, South Carolina, starting November, well, her last day with us is November twelfth, Friday the twelfth, so we wish her all the best.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I've got two questions. Fifteen hundred bucks spread out, that doesn't make sense with, i- if you're gonna be collecting that from the contractors, if, if you're gonna be charging them a hundred percent across the board for everything they've done.
Right, the, the rebalancing effort that we went through with the Municipal Association did not include.
Anticipated right.
Was everything what they're saying?
Mm-hmm.
So, what's, uh, what's the construction company behind the fire department?
C-three.
C-three, they're worldwide, right?
They're engineering, so they would fall under a different classification than construction. They would fall under the new class six?
They went from a?
Engineer, no, engineer went to a five, I believe.
They're engineers, they're not property managers?
Professional services, I think that's what they would fall under in AICS. Yeah, and not contracting.
So they went from a two to a three to a five?
Yeah, with two, three, to five.
But the method that they've been paying under is one hundred percent revenue earned in that location, less what's paid elsewhere. They're already under that methodology. The only ones that aren't are contractors, they've been carved out. And that's the other thing that the code is trying to address, is getting it standardized and eliminating these carve-outs.
Is this not considered an infringement on the home rule?
You can make that argument.
Well, I think someone will. I think they're gonna be sued, uh, whichever city, whether it's Hilton Head or someone ends up with the least money from this, I think we'll file a lawsuit. I would.
Do, do we have any indication that even those that use the hybrid system are, I mean, they, they didn't, they wanted to prevent the windfall, have they done anything to prevent the, the loss of revenue or not?
When, if, when you go through the rebalancing effort, uh, a- and you, uh, put all the, all the businesses, just like us, in, in the classification system, that generates a projected number, and if it's, um, lower, that they raise the rates, if it's higher, you lower the rates. So it's just a balancing effort of, uh, putting all those classes into a revenue schedule, and then you balance the per thousand rate accordingly.
So in this new sort of ideal scenario, no one should gain more than one percent or lose more than one percent?
On the whole.
On the whole.
On the whole. Individual businesses can go from a one to a seven.
Yeah.
But on the whole, no city will gain more than one percent overall. Or lose one, you know, it's, it's designed to be revenue neutral from the revenue that you earned in two thousand twenty.
Others? All right, we'll look forward to, uh, getting this, uh, presentation, and, um, we've got until April fifteenth, is that when licenses are due, or, when, when, when are licenses due?
April thirtieth, they're due. Yeah, we'll start sending renewals out sometime in February.
Okay, all right. Um, that, that concludes our workshop meeting for this evening, uh, we'll take a recess and then start our regular meeting shortly. Called the meeting to order. Uh, this is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened October the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Lee Dumas, if you would, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation for council. If you'll please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this great night that you've given us and this council that you've assembled here, we invoke your presence tonight, we thank you for the city, for those that serve the city, and we ask that you continue to bless us and keep us as, as you always have. Go with us tonight in this meeting, help us to be mindful of all the needs inside of the city, and to do your will always, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Uh, we thank you for joining us this evening, we are running a few minutes behind schedule, we had a, uh, scheduled workshop this evening to talk about some upcoming changes in business license ordinance and, uh, the fees related to that, and, uh, so have been meeting with staff, uh, since earlier this afternoon, and, uh, appreciate you joining us this evening for our regularly scheduled meeting. Um, at the beginning of, uh, each meeting, we, uh, set aside time for public forum. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that being council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting from October the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Hang on a second. I'll have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Downer?
Yes.
We have a special recognition this evening, um, we are going to, uh, offer a, a proclamation, uh, in regards to Red Ribbon Week, and we are joined this evening by a young man, and I am sorry, I don't have your name in front of me, but you will come to the front.
Yep, right here, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, we'll do this right here.
And your name, sir?
My name's Corporal Hamill, sir.
Hamill? Hamill. Well, thank you for joining us, and, um, we have done this, um, a number of years, I'm not sure how many, but several, uh, I think, and, uh, this is a proclamation declaring Red Ribbon Week in Greer, and it says, whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that that line lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with hard work and determination of organizations such as the young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas government and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our community. use of illicit drugs in our communities, the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Kiki Camera, a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. Whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, October 23rd through 31st has been designated as National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, our mayor Rick Danner hereby proclaim October the 23rd through 31st is Red Ribbon Week in the city of Greer and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. I want to present that to you, sir, and thank you for your efforts in that regard. We appreciate it. Anything you'd like to add?
Not, sir.
He only speaks when he's spoken to. Um, council, departmental reports are contained in your packet this evening. Information in that regard is available from the administrator and the department heads. Mr. Slyford joins us this evening for our financial update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're pleased to bring to you the month-end report for September 2021. Beginning with the general fund, you will notice we have revenue of 2.6 million with operational expenditures of 6.8 million. Adding to that, fund balance usage for construction projects, we have a total expenditures of 7.5 million. The operational percentage for budget is 4% under budget and including the fund balance usage, we are right on budget at zero excess and, or negative for that matter, too. And then on the general fund, have a carrying cash balance of 12.8 million. Referencing the dashboards, we have a negative combined variance of $182,000 for the general fund. Moving to, to the hospitality fund, we have revenue of 735,000 and expenditures of 75,000 with a carrying cash balance of just under 2 million. And then in the stormwater fund, revenue recorded through September of 9,900, expenditures of 596,000 and a cash balance in the stormwater fund of 2.2 million. We have, do you take any questions you may have?
Council floor is open for questions. Comments?
I don't think the PDF on the latest hospitality fund report is correct. Looks like that's the general fund as well. On the revenue side.
On, let's see, hospitality? Let me get back to hospitality. What do you think is incorrect in the revenue?
Okay, if I pull that PDF up, it's, I didn't find any of the numbers you just said. It says.
We have, you have on the revenue for hospitality of year-to-date actual 735,000. It's the green line.
Okay, that's not the report I'm looking at, obviously. That's okay. I see 734, 696, year-to-date.
Are you on the budget report or on the graphs?
The, the hospitality tax fund budget report, September 2021.
Okay. The, the revenue just for hospitality is a 734, there's $329 of interest for the total of the 735 for the whole fund.
Okay, so what is our budgeted number? I mean, it's, you've got budgeted, that's what's confusing me. And that fir-, that first column or second column says budgeted.
That's the annual budget for 2,556,000. And then we have a year-to-date of 734 with remaining balance of just over 1.8 million and that is 4% over budget, just on hospitality revenue.
So currently our revenue, 242 is, is the revenue for September.
Correct.
Versus what was our, our budgeted revenue? Does that show on here?
Not for the month, no, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
Others? Thank you, Mr. Sly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayorman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As always, if you, there's any further clarification you need on any of the reports that are provided in your packet, including the financial report, give us a shout at any time and we'll be glad to clarify them. Handful of things I wanted to touch base with y'all on tonight. The first is just a reminder that your leadership team, your department heads will be in our retreat all day Friday. We will be in this, in this building, in this hall, going over some yearly, yearly stuff and setting some goals for the next year and trying to fine tune some of the things that we're going to bring to council for your retreat in the early winter, well, I guess late winter of next year. The second thing is Christmas decorations will start going up soon, believe it or not. Furthermore, this is, you're going to see new Christmas decorations for the first time in a number of years. If you'll recall, we put money in the budget this year to replace some rather faded and dated decorations that have festooned greater Greer for a number of years, but we're looking forward to new stuff this year. Reminder that leaf pickup begins November 1st. The sweeper truck will run on Trade Street and through our downtown area Monday, Wednesday and Friday instead of Monday and Friday, like it has in an effort to stay on top of that debris that inevitably blows down there. The road diet, we had a meeting, a community meeting here regarding the road diet and some structural changes that we'll be seeing on Main Street. It was favorable, as a matter of fact, I'm unaware of any negative comments about the proposed changes to Main Street going through town, but that work should begin on November 1st as well. The, the animal control ordinance was a topic of conversation at the last meeting and I've held that meet, that reading over until we haven't had an opportunity to meet with some of our community partners and fine tune some of the issues that were brought up through those discussions. So stay tuned on that. I know there's meetings scheduled this week with some, some local advocates, but we're trying to hammer out some of the contentious items in that ordinance. The other thing I wanted to make council aware of right now is that the city of Greer is not immune to what a number of folks in a number of industries are dealing with and that staffing shortages. So to give you an idea of how that's impacting your staff here at, at the city, we have 326 budgeted employees, 19 of which are seasonal. So just to kind of give you a, a idea of the scope of what we're talking about, currently we have 277 employees, so we have 37 vacant positions that we are in the process of filling. So roughly 10% of our workforce is currently unfilled. To give you an idea of where we're seeing that, that, those vacancies, the biggest is in public services and in that public services division, we have 12 vacant positions, which represents roughly a third of that workforce. We have seven vacancies in recreation, seven in police, one in engineering, one in administration, and four in building and development services. So I, I bring this to your attention only for information, but to let you know that we are working as diligently as we can, not only to fill those positions, but trying to get as creative as we can to attract new talent, but retain the talent we've got. But the retention part is really pretty easy once they get to working with the city of Greer. I can't imagine a better place to work and I've worked in other places and I'm as happy as I can be to be here. So I really want everybody to understand that, and really thank council for all the work you've done to help retain employees because you've made it as good a place to work as you're going to find in South Carolina. And finally, the last thing is the wrecker ordinance. That was something that we had dealt with probably a month or more now. I had asked staff, police staff to get back with me with a new revised ordinance by November 1st. Obviously, it's not November 1st, but I want you to be aware that we're still working towards that end. And with that, council, other than any questions, that concludes my report.
Mr. Mayorman, in regards to the, the wrecker ordinance, I know that our staff has continued to, to work on that issue and I appreciate all the effort that they're making in that regard. I would personally like to ask council if you will allow me to become more engaged in that process of determining what that, that may look like in the future and that may also involve a committee of, of, of council members. I know there was a lot of discussion as, as we began to refine the definitions and, and to do the due diligence part, but it is, you know, it has come to my attention that we, we have some folks that are playing fast and loose with the rules and while they may have a wrecker yard here in the city, their, their trucks and their businesses are located outside of the city so they don't have to pay taxes and we've got folks that obviously, if you drive to their place of business, have several trucks with several names on it, I think is, is an issue as well, too. And the other thing that's been brought to my attention is that, you know, the, the efficiency of, of having literally 10, 12, 14 wreckers services, providing service for the city. I just don't think that's the most efficient or effective way of doing things. I would, I would like to see us move to a more streamlined model and that may be where the, the, a committee of council would determine with the help of our police department what, what may be an efficient number. We may need some help in that regard as well, but I think the level of service could be considerably raised if council, if, if, if the operators knew that they were, they were going to be receiving a sufficient number of calls during the course of the month to maintain a business in the city and to work closely with the city as opposed to just sort of hit and miss on, on a monthly basis. And I think that will improve service. I think it'll improve call time and I think it'll give us the ability to, to do a much better job in terms of due diligence on some of, on, on some of these services and give us an opportunity to request proposals and possibly even bids for the services. And I've, I've been talking with some other cities about that and have taken the lead in some regards from our, our county that uses committees to make decisions and it seems appropriate for us maybe in this regard to do the same thing and, and determine who would be the providers for our service in the future. And so I, I don't want to jump in the, the middle of something that's going on at the police department, but I have spoken with the chief. He's aware of my interest in being part of this effort and I will, without objection from this council, in, in, inject myself into that process with your blessing, sir. So.
Love the insight, sir. We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
I want to ask Mr. Mayor another question before we move on. Thank you for helping on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Can you explain a little bit more about the road diet and, you know, where this is coming from and who's going to be impacted and, and when this is going to happen and just a little bit more information on that?
Yeah, sure. So the road diet itself is in effect what it sounds like. It's, it's, we are, we are shrinking, we're maintaining capacity, but we're losing a little bit of lanes. So I think we're, we're shedding some, some unwanted lanes as we go through the Main Street area from the top of May or Point Set out to Bearden Street. Bearden, right, Robert, that's about where we're stopping it. But in effect, it, it takes what we, most of, most of what you've got along that stretch is four-lane undivided road. You've just got, we've maxed out the, the amount of right-of-way that's available there and I said we, the state has just by virtue of the amount of traffic that goes through there and you've got four lanes, which creates often some unsafe turning maneuvers or kind of drastic maneuvers to get out of the right lane if someone's turning right or if someone's taking a left to get out of the left lane to, to get in the right lane and get passed. So what we're looking to do in this particular, with this road diet, is go to a more of a, of a three-lane divided format to where you, it can absorb the same amount of traffic. It doesn't restrict access, it doesn't restrict traffic flow through town, but it provides a better, more efficient manner in which that traffic goes through and is certainly a safer. And to be honest with you, it's going to be a better looking road format than what we currently have. We've, we've put a lot of money on that into town through our streetscape project and this is just going to enhance all of that effort. And the beauty of this is it will enhance that effort without minimizing or choking traffic coming through an already busy area.
It's something that we proactively did. We approached the state and asked for.
We approached the state and said, look, you know, we won't, we, we would love to do the analysis on this and take a look at the possibility. Obviously, it's a state road and they have, it's their road. I mean, they could have said absolutely not, but they found it to be a reasonable request. It met all of their standards. We held the community meeting and we're moving forward with it.
I, I think the origins of it actually go back to our pedestrian plan. It's, it's contained in the pedestrian plan and while we've, we've made some significant changes to it, there are not the dedicated bike lanes and, and, and that sort of thing. But the origin of it was actually from that pedestrian plan that this group endorsed a number of years ago.
So who did the design?
Design was done by Co-Transco.
I've, I've heard one negative comment, two or three things, but it's the same comment. They were afraid that it might start causing more cut-through if you're coming in to downtown and you're going, taking a ride onto Arlington to get over to Pine and just kind of scoot But it, to me, you're going to have the same cut-through as long as the same traffic volume is able to continue. Is that, that is the, I guess, this new design, it is not constricting flow, is it enhancing flow?
It, I don't know that it enhances or constricts it. I think it provides for safer passage through town. Take it, take a look at Wade Hampton Boulevard, for instance. What you've got is, you've got six lanes with a large divided median. All we're doing in this particular case is going to the same divided median with one lane on each side as opposed to two lanes. So if you're going to make a left maneuver, you've got the median in which to pull over in and cars can continue to pass. It doesn't change the right-hand maneuver where you're taking that right. The only difference is if I'm behind Mr. Arrowood in the right-hand lane, I'm not going to make that sudden jerking move, motion left to get, to get around. And let's also remember that it's not, that this diet doesn't impact all the way up here to the top of Point Set. It's, you've still got the, the dedicated turn lane, so that's not going to be affected here, nor will it be affected towards the Bearden end as you get towards Harley Bonds because you've got to have that widened apron to allow for those dedicated turning movements. But the Waze app is going to be the Waze app and people are going to find ways around town anyway. And, and one thing that your staff is working on now is a, a large traffic impact analysis because as we continue to grow and as we see more investment in our central business district in our downtown, the way we've always traveled is going to have to change. So we're having to make that analysis over long-term.
Do we have any idea when the paving and everything on the road is going to be complete as part of this process?
This should be done, no, the work will begin November 1st and should be done no later than the third week of November. And there's a hard stop with state road projects anyway because after November 30th, they don't allow any work on state roads. So it has to be done before November 30th. But that'll be the painting and the milling and the repaving and everything.
So it's, it's a simple change. It's, you're on top of 30 days.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, yeah, it's not going to be a huge impact to traffic other than allowing for the milling and then the repaving and the restriping.
Others?
Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move to items of old business this evening. The first item before us is the second and final reading of ordinance number 51-2021. This is an ordinance.
This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Greer, South Carolina Becknell Investors LLC, located on DeYoung Road and Freeman Farm Road by 100% petitioning to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Any new or additional information, Ms. Cotty?
Just that the Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 18th and recommended approval of the zoning.
Comes with a recommendation for approval. I'll entertain a motion to receive. So move. Motion and second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
We'll move to the second item of old business, second and final reading of ordinance number 54-2021. This is an ordinance repealing ordinance number 26, 2019 regarding Project Freeman Farms. Any new or additional information in that regard, Mr. Mayorman?
No, sir.
Comes for second reading. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion and a second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we'll move to new business items. The first of which is the final reading of Resolution 15-2021. This is a resolution to accept Hartwood Lake subdivision streets, namely Hartwood Lake Lane, Gray Point Drive, Sun Ridge Place into the City of Greer system. Mr. Robert Rue joins us for that conversation. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. First up tonight, we got Hartwood Lake subdivision. This development began in June of 2015. It's located off of South Super Road in Council District 5. Construction and build-out is complete on the site. Seventy-eight out of seventy-eight units have been finalized. That's single-family residential. Staff has inspected the construction and believe it meets city standards. Therefore, staff recommends Hartwood Lake Lane, length of 2,303 feet. Gray Point Drive, length of 935 feet. Sun Ridge Place, with a length of 120 feet, be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance.
Final reading of Resolution 15-2021 comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did they ever get the wires where they're supposed to be?
Yes, sir, yes. Took a while, but yes.
Apparently, there's a lot of flow down that initial road when there's a heavy rain. Is that, have you ever been out there when there's a torrential rain to see just what's going on?
No, sir, I've not. And that's the first I'm hearing of that, so I'm not sure what-
Well, they had some kind of a little thing sitting out in the road at one of the bottom drains to help catch more of that rain. And I don't know if it was overrunning the drain or what.
That's recently or during construction, do you know?
No, that's within the last six months. When I was checking on the wires out there, I noticed that they had a kind of, the other thing they put under the coolers in the grocery store to catch condensation, they had a similar thing out in the street. It looked like to help kind of collect water. But I've never gotten a complaint about drainage from the people down at the bottom of the hill.
I know that there were some issues during construction, during rough grading of the roads. But that's just a function of getting the water into the inlets is kind of an issue when roads are rough graded and not paved yet and infrastructure's not complete. But that's the first I'm hearing of recent issues out there. And I've been, I've had discussions with their HOA president on the wire issues, on lighting issues, et cetera, et cetera. But he didn't ever mention drainage issue.
They must be okay.
While you're out and about on Thursday, you might wanna run by there. Any further discussion or questions in regards to Resolution 15-2021?
Yeah, I wanted to check. Now, you mentioned 2015?
Yes, ma'am, that's when-
When they actually start construction?
So 20, that June 2015 date is when the grading permit was issued. So I'm not, I don't have written down when housing construction started.
I kinda look back on some of the tax records and it was seeming like it was 2019 or something like that. So when you said 2015, that kind of surprised me on the time. And I guess as engineer or from our department, someone goes out and visually inspects these roads?
That's correct, yes, ma'am. So we sidewalk, curb, asphalt, make sure it's good and in good shape and repaired. All repairs are made before I take it, before y'all.
Do we have a timeline? Like, I know that we, you know, before it comes before council and the annexation is approved for the property and, you know, it's kind of guidelines with inspections and all that as it goes in. But do we have any guideline as to how old or a time period from when it's completed till the streets are accepted or?
We do not have a set policy in that regard. We do require the, usually it's asphalt repairs and the final surface to be bonded if they're not in place.
Okay, you do, okay.
When we approve the final plat, whatever infrastructure, landscaping, road items are not in, those are required to be bonded by the developer. So we do have that.
Of course, you know, when you look at this picture, it looks kind of rough. That's why I was just kind of-
I think that was just a dreary day when I took that picture. But the road's in good shape out there.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First and final reading of Resolution 16-2021. This is a resolution to accept Cypress Landing subdivision streets, namely Cypress Landing Place, Spy Glen Way, Cabot Hill Lane into the City of Greer street system. Mr. Rue?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Next up, we got Cypress Landing subdivision. This development began in September 2016. It's located near the intersection of East Gap Creek Road and Country Club Road in Council District 4. All utilities are in, streets are paved, and it is also completely built out at 59 of 59 single-family homes. Staff has inspected the construction and believes it meets city standards. Therefore, staff recommends Cypress Landing Place with a length of 528 feet, Spy Glen Way with a length of 738 feet, and Cabot Hill Lane, length of 883 feet, be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance.
Comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive Resolution 16-2021. So move.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
First and final reading of Resolution 17-2021. This is a resolution to accept Creekside Manor Phases 1 and 2 subdivision streets, namely Tannery Drive, Fox Bank Circle, Merkel Drive into the City of Greer system. Mr. Rue?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, we got Creekside Manor Phases 1 and 2. There is a third phase, which is not part of this acceptance. Creekside Manor began in March of 2018. It's located off of Burns Road in Council District 3. In these two phases, all utilities are in, streets are paved, and Phases 1 and 2 have 73 lots. The overall development has 141 lots and 102 units are complete out there in all three phases, just for reference. Therefore, staff recommends Tannery Drive with a length of 1,116 feet, Fox Bank Circle with a length of 1,257 feet, and Merkel Drive, length of 305 feet, be accepted into the street system, city street system for ownership and maintenance.
Counsel, a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive Resolution 17-2021. So move.
Safe.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Daner?
Yes.
First and final reading of Resolution 18-2021, a resolution to accept Mayfield Crossing Phase 1 into subdivision streets, namely Mayfield Crossing Lane, Brazelton Street, Marietta Lane, Rome Court into the City of Greer street system. Mr. Rue?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Mayfield Crossing subdivision development began in June of 2017. It's located near the intersection of Mayfield Road and Abner Creek Road in Council District 3. All utilities are in, streets are paved, and 67 out of 90 of the single-family homes are completed out there. Staff has inspected the construction and believes it meets city standards. Therefore, staff recommends Mayfield Crossing Lane with a length of 1,373 feet, Brazelton Street with a length of 1,419 feet, Marietta Lane with a length of 970 feet, and Rome Court with a length of 332 feet be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance.
Will you pull up the picture of it, please, sir?
Yes, sir, sorry.
No problem. With the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive Resolution number 18-2021.
So moved.
I have a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
First and final reading of Resolution 19-2021, a resolution to accept Freeman Farm subdivision streets, namely Ralston Road, Edenvale Drive, and Elwin Lane into the City of Greer street system. Mr. Rue?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Final roads for you this evening. Freeman Farm subdivision began in May of 2018. It's located off of Old Jones Road in Council District 3. All utilities are in, streets are paved, and 120 out of 126 proposed single-family homes are complete out there. Staff has inspected the construction and believes it meets city standards. Therefore, staff recommends Ralston Road with a length of 2,750 feet, Edenvale Drive with a length of 850 feet, and Elwin Lane with a length of 820 feet, be accepted into the city street system for ownership and maintenance.
This is final reading of Resolution 19-2021. I'll entertain a motion to be received.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Rue, I want to ask you one question. I was thinking about, we had, Mr. Grant brought up something a while back about the sidewalks and the slope or what did we ever decide about that or how did we resolve that issue?
So per ADA standards, sidewalk cross-slope must be 2% or less. And so we inspect when homes are, homes call, house construction calls for finals, our engineering inspectors inspect the sidewalks and make sure they meet that. And if they don't, the builders slash developers are required to rip them out and put them in correctly. So in part of this, bringing streets before you, we make sure all sidewalks meet that standard and are repaired accordingly if necessary before we bring them before you for vote.
I think the issue with the subdivisions that he was referencing, there was a significant grade change from where the house was down to the road, and they just didn't have a lot of space in the front yard. And I think there was some issue with getting to that grade.
That's correct, yeah. So sometimes the driveway will be steep and they'll just carry that to the curb. But we make them kind of level that sidewalk crossing out and tie in the sidewalk, or driveway better to the sidewalk. So we've been a lot more diligent and upfront in our communication to make sure developers and builders know we're looking for that quality sidewalk and that quality development. I think it's, you go around, not only in the city but other developments in the area, I think it's clear, maybe contractors weren't doing it correctly before, but now they got the picture and know how it needs to be done.
Good, thank you.
Further discussion in regards to 19-2021? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number 52-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Arthur State Bank, located at 705 South Buncombe Road from C2 to RM2. Ms. Cotty joins us for that conversation. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, again, this is a rezoning request. This is for two parcels. They do have different ownerships, so you will see kind of two identical presentations in a row, but with pretty much the same information just for two different parcels. So they are requesting to go from C2 to RM2 multifamily residential with the intent to develop a small apartment complex. This is at the intersection of South Buncombe Road and Brushy Creek Road. This is the current zoning of the property. Again, C2 surrounded by C2 and the blue star. Again, it's the two parcels. And then the future land use map, which does call for mixed employment along a transitional corridor. This is the current street view of the site. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on October 18th and recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, this comes as first reading of ordinance number 52-2021. Comes with a recommendation. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And I'll need a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. In the notes, it says that what we're rezoning is gonna be combined with another parcel to develop a small apartment complex.
Yes, I believe it's 120 units.
Do we know what they may look like or, I mean, is that?
The city doesn't have any design standards for apartment or any commercial projects.
At least, do we know if they're gonna be market-driven rates?
I believe the applicant's here. If you have some questions for him?
If I show up and is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us? Would you like to come to the podium, please, if there may be questions in that regard? Do you want to give us a quick overview of the project, please? Yeah, if you'll give us your name and association with the project, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hunter Gibson. I live at 224 North Brookway, Greenville, 29615. I'm a partner at Standard Capital Partners, and we will be the developer and owner of the development. As Ashley said, yes, 120 units. It'll be a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom units. We've been relatively active in the upstate for the last 30 years. More, last 15 years or so, our brand is the Viningsat. We've done a couple of properties in Malden, in Greenville, outside of Traveler's Rest. But it'll be, it's gonna be a market rate, but we're targeting 70 to 80% AMI. So it's gonna be a little unique as opposed to some of the newer developments that we're seeing across the upstate where, you know, they're gonna let the market determine. And when I do those deals, I try to push the rents as much as the market will let me. This is gonna be a little unique. And it's, we love the location with proximity to the hospital and to the city park. It's gonna be a great quality of life, but you'll be proud of the way the property looks. We're gonna build it to the exact same standard that we build all of our properties to.
You say 70% of AMI?
Yeah, average household, median household income.
Is part of this located back behind like where the Exxon station is?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the service station is on the corner. And then our site effectively wraps the corner. And so we have frontage on both Brushy Creek and on South Buncombe.
So you'll be developing both, both of those sites, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be consolidated after we purchase.
Is your entrance gonna be on Brushy Creek?
The preliminary site plan that we've designed now has the primary access on South Buncombe with alternate access on Brushy Creek.
Others?
Thank you for making yourself available.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance number 52-2021. Comments? Questions? The 70% of AMI, which means it's gonna be 70% of the market rate, correct?
Or is, is that? AMI?
Average median.
Average median.
Okay, so it's, uh, so where does the average median income, where, where is that statistic being drawn? From, I mean, is it citywide, or is it this area?
It's typically done by county.
Done by county?
And regions, I believe, um, I want to say it's around forty, forty-one for a family of two.
Are, are these apartments going to be subsidized?
I don't believe so.
Further discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number fifty-three dash twenty twenty one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by MJT Properties LLC located at thirty-four eighteen Brushy Creek Road from C two to RM two. Ms. Cotty?
So again, this is the second piece of the same project that you heard for ordinance number fifty-two. Um, so the first one was the parcel that fronted South Buncombe. This is the parcel that fronts, um, Brushy Creek Road. Again, it is currently zoned C two, and they're requesting RM two, um, to develop an apartment complex. And future land use map is, um, mixed employment along a transitional corridor, and then a street view, and again, Planning Commission did have a public hearing and recommended approval.
Just by show of hand, again, is the owner of the property, representative of the owner of the property with us? So noted, thank you. Um, entertain a motion to receive. First reading of ordinance number fifty-three dash twenty twenty one. And I'll need a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
Are these going to be beside the apartment comp?
Um, so it's near.
Constantly, oftentimes, I can hardly picture it. Like, I know the apartment complex is there, and the park's here. Are they going to be closer to the traffic light, or closer to?
Yes, ma'am, across from, so the, um, the yellow, the gold is, um, the apartment complex, and then that green is the park. Um, and then the corner right next to the star is that Exxon, and so the star is the two parcels, and behind it is, um, excuse me, behind it is the assisted living facility. Those are all that cluster of dots that you see behind it in the red.
Others? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing number, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, let's move to the, uh, last item of business this evening. It's the first reading of ordinance number fifty-five dash twenty twenty one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by William, Ken Burnett, Karen Robertson, and Cheryl Genova located at nine oh eight South Buncombe Road from C two commercial to R fifteen, single-family. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please?
Sure. Again, this is, um, one parcel, um, located along South Buncombe. This is the property that has the blue star. Um, the larger piece at the corner that's zoned C two is the Bojangles, so it's located between Highway fourteen, um, and the intersection with Hammett Bridge Road. Um, it is currently zoned C two. It does have a single-family residence on it, which is in this street view. Um, so it, the single-family residence is currently considered legal non-conforming. Um, they are requesting to rezone it, um, to residential R fifteen. Um, the future land use map is traditional neighborhood located along a transitional corridor. Um, staff did feel that based on the location on this corridor and between the two heavy corridors, that this area was more suited to commercial and recommended, um, not to approve the rezoning. Um, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on October eighteenth, and they recommended approval of the rezoning to R fifteen. So again, this is a street view of the site, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance fifty-five dash twenty twenty one.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Can you repeat staff's?
Staff recommends denial of the rezoning.
And that was that thought process?
Um, so we primarily make our recommendations based on the future land use map. We also take a look at existing zoning and existing uses. Um, and just given this location along a heavily traveled corridor, um, in an area, traditional neighborhood does have housing, but it also calls for commercial, and it is located along a transitional corridor, which does call for commercial. Um, and so just given this location, again, with, um, the major thoroughfares, we felt this area was more appropriate for commercial, and so we did not recommend rezoning it to residential. Um, however, Planning Commission, um, did recommend to rezone to R fifteen.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Would you like to address council in any regard?
Yes.
All right. If you'll come to the podium and give us your name, um, in association with the project, please, or the request.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Rogers. I live at two oh six Hammett Bridge Road, uh, right around the corner from, from this property. The, uh, the purpose of buying this is because my son and I are buying nine oh six and nine oh eight right next to each other. So his, uh, he's already purchased his and moved in, and then, then there was an issue with the zoning affecting the ability to close a loan on it as a residential property, even though it has a house on it. So I've requested that it be rezoned so that I can finish my purchase and move in. So nine oh six, the one right next to Bojangles, I moved my son in there last weekend, so now I'm just waiting to, uh, get the house next door.
This property has been vacant?
It has been vacant for a considerable period of time, I believe.
So I think I hear you right. This is going to be your personal residence?
That is correct.
Others? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Cotty? Um, refresh my memory, uh, uh, um, rezoning, um, if there was a request to rezone this property again, uh, a, a waiting period of some kind or not?
Um, only if it were denied, it would have to wait a year.
Okay, so they could, they could literally rezone this to, um, R fifteen, uh, be two residents there together, uh, at some point in time, if they were approached by, uh, a, a commercial entity that was going to make it worth their while to move, that, that could be considered then and, uh, allow them to re, or to seek another zoning request for that property.
Yes, sir, and that was, um, a heavy item of discussion at the Planning Commission as well.
Okay, so it doesn't encumber them from accepting or, or, um, entertaining offers on that, on that property, because it seems that individually given, neither one of those is going to support commercial, but together they certainly would, and with the addition of the one there to the, to the south or to the west, what, east, whatever that is, that it, that, that could potentially be, um, commercial in the future. Okay. Others?
Yeah, I think that's what happened originally. It was zoned, um, residential. The owners was, was a lot of interest, especially when they were entered, they were developing the corner at, uh, Hammett Bridge and, um, Buncombe, and I think those were zoned commercial, and then they, they were just, they're not large enough to do anything. And so now they're coming back to, which is fine. Yes, that's right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't disagree with staff on this, that its ultimate and, and, and probably highest use is, is commercial. I think to, to Mr. Airwood's point, when they redid that intersection, uh, and did that catch basin that we see at the very bottom of the picture right there, and made the changes to the other side of the road, uh, that there was a number of smaller parcels that got left, kind of hanging out there, and unless you were able to, uh, find somebody that would take and, um, consolidate several of those, it sort of slowed development out there, and I think when, when some of that property was first marketed, um, some folks had stars in their eyes and, and, and went ahead and sought that, uh, change. Um, I, I'm not concerned in the least that, that this is a lower use. Um, I suspect that, uh, given the right amount of time, that, um, that we'll see this family, we'll see this family again. Others?
So, yeah, give me straight on the vote here. We are voting to uphold the staff recommendation?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. Yes, so, yeah.
They will be upholding the planning commission.
Yes, sir, of approval for R fifteen.
So a yes vote is yes on the request.
This property, I'm trying to get myself in right view here. This property, like, the first square, not the one where the blue, where the star is. But the one on Ham, I guess, um, can't see where the road, I guess that's Hammett Ridge up there.
That's the Bojangles.
And that's the Bojangles, right?
Highway fourteen.
Yeah.
Buncombe, and then right at that top corner.
It's Hammett Ridge Road and the Bojangles.
A couple down there, I know. I think a couple had been like for, um, daycare or something.
There's a dress shop across the street, um, and so it's a little easier to see in the street view. You can see the corner of the Bojangles, two down from it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You made, you've made a good decision, sir. We frequent, but we frequent that Bojangles quite a bit.
Council, we got first reading of fifty-five dash twenty twenty one. Any further discussion in that regard? This comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Uh, all minds clear? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, that concludes, uh, our regularly scheduled meeting tonight. Uh, we do have several items in executive session. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session for the stated matters.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a contractual matter pertaining degree of relief is allowed by state statute, section thirty dash four seventy A two, and then also to discuss two economic development matters. And, uh, we're allowed by, that's Project Chubbs, that's one, and then the second is Project Homecoming, and those are allowed by state statute, section thirty dash four seventy eight five.
Motion to hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. For those of you that have not joined us before, we stay here in chambers for executive session. We'll take a quick, um, five-minute break, and then we will go into execution, executive session after the room is cleared. Council, in executive session this evening, we have considered three matters. One, a contractual matter, and, uh, two economic development matters as, uh, allowed by state statute. Uh, we're going to take no motion, I mean, no action in regards to any of those act, uh, items that is before us this evening. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved, Ms. Duncan.
And a second.
Second.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Stand adjourned.